All right, it's seven o'clock and we are about to start. So, welcome all of you. This is the City Council meeting for October 3rd for the city of Minutrista. First order of business, if you have electronic devices with you, cell phones, et cetera, please put them on airplane mode or silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, before we get started, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
So again, thank you for, all of you, for being here and also for those that will be joining us by watching our YouTube video later on. First order, I'd like to make some introductions. We have several newcomers here this evening. I'm going to start on the end. We have Justin Thompson here this evening, sitting in for Chief Falls. Welcome and thank you for joining us. And then we have Sarah Sensala with Kennedy and Graven. She is our attorney. Then we have David Abel, our Community Development Director. Brian Grimm is our Finance Director. Jasper Krugel, our City Administrator. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the Mayor. And to my left are Council members Pam Mortenson, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. John Chamberlain had a family emergency this evening, is not able to be here. And then on the end, we have our City Engineer, Allison Fowski with WSB. We have our City Clerk, Isdan Matzko. Our Director of Administration, Ally Paul Fuess. And then in the front here, we have Adam Gabois, also our Assistant City Engineer with WSB. And then we have Aaron Palmer. Thank you. He is our brand-new water infrastructure guru engineer. Thank you for attending, Aaron. And then we have another engineer with us this evening. And you, your name again?
Chris Butler.
Chris, okay. And I will never remember all your names, but thank you for being here. So, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for oh. Tonight, we don't have any special presentations, so we'll go, we'll move on to persons to be heard. Can I ask, the people that signed up here, Alan Hill, Renee McFadden, Terry Dunn, Cheryl Hill, I think all of you are here because of the road project, so you'll have your opportunity at that time. Randy Beerbaum, are you here? Are you here for something else? Would you hear? So Randy, come, please come to the podium. You'll have to state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council. We don't make decisions regarding persons to be heard tonight. Thank you.
My name is Randy Beerbaum. I live at 6482 Will, Fort Minutrista. I'm the president of the Northside Lake Water Association. And our property, the Northside Lake, backed up to the property of sixty, that you're having, 6605 West Edge Road. And you're going to discuss it later. I'm sorry, I've had a long day and week already, and so I can't stay through the meeting. I know you've got more important things. But I just want to make sure that our voices is heard, that we want to make sure that the the buckthorn now has been thinned out with the fall weather, and so we can kind of see things now. And they have a lot of boats, vehicles, and that. And so make sure that when you do your additional review, that they stay with the 12 max licensed vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beerbaum. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any you wish to remove? Okay, hearing none then, we have consent agenda items A through J. They consist of approve our work session meeting minutes from September 19th, 2022. B is approve our City Council regular meeting minutes from September 19th, 2022. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to adopt the certification for unpaid utility fees for 2023 taxes. E is a resolution to adopt certification for land use special fees to, for 2023 taxes. F is a resolution to accept the donation of funds for the purchase of investigative audio equipment. G is award a contract with Wilson's Nursery for Trees for the Hunter's Crest neighborhood and city parks. H is a resolution to approve a conditional use permit at 4250 Kings Point Road. JHIJ is a resolution to authorize the purchase of a Trimble R2 Global Positioning System unit from Frontier Precision. And J is a resolution to award a professional services agreement with WSB for the reconstruction of Gene Lanier Park. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through J?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to the public hearing. I know that's why all of you are here this evening. So first, first, we're going to start out with the quick, easy one, and that's the application for a temporary one-day intoxicating liquor license. I believe that's Ms. Matzko.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the Mount West Tonka Rotary submitted an application to host the Tonka Brew Fest for fundraising event on November 5th at Gale Woods Farm. The city did publish a notice in the September 10th laker. As of today, the city hasn't received any comments regarding this request. The Rotary passed a background check performed by the Police Department, and the Police Department issued a special events permit. Staff has recommended an approval of the one-day temporary license to the Mount West Tonka Rotary Club for Annual Brew Fest on Saturday, November 5th, at Gale Woods Farm, with conditions stated in the staff report, and to waive the application fee of $40.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to first open the public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. If there's anybody here this evening that wishes to speak for or against this application or has any kind of comments regarding the application, you may do so at this time. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. All right, no?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, this is for the, this is for the Rotary application for their one-day Brew Fest. And it's a good organization, they do, okay, good, thank you. All right, you'll drink to that. All right, good. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to take it back to council. Council, is it a motion to approve the one-day intoxicating liquor license for the event on November 5th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Ref, Ms. McGregor. There's too many Misses up here. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes for oh. Now we'll move on to what everybody is here for, and that's the street and utility reconstruction project. We're just going to start out with project number oh-one-dash-two-three. I believe that's Mr. Gabois.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the second public hearing, really, the three here tonight is for the 2023 Street and Utility Reconstruction Project, 0123. And this project's been through the feasibility stage. The last time we met to talk about it, it was presenting the feasibility report for the project. It's the Morning View area, consisting of Morning View Drive, Morning View Court, Westwood Avenue, Westwood Drive, and Eastview Avenue. And the proposed scope is complete street reconstruction, water main replacement, storm sewer enhancements, minor rehabilitation to the sanitary sewer system. So I'd be happy to answer questions about the scope, but otherwise on the agenda tonight is holding a public hearing, after which you'd consider a resolution to order the improvement to be, to move into the plan and specification stage. And at that point, we present a proposal for that work as well.
All right. So this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now. So the public hearing is now open for the reconstruction project, and this is project oh-one-dash-two-three. And this, and I'm going to do both of these projects, if I can, at the same time, both for Morning View and for the North Arm. Can I do both of them at the same time?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you can, although I would probably keep them separate.
Okay, you want them separate? All right, that's fine. So this is for the Morning View, Eastview project. So we have people here this evening. I'll start in the front row. Anybody here that wishes to speak or say anything? Just come to the podium, please, just state your name.
I need to sign up.
That's fine, you don't have to sign up for the public hearing.
Okay, Tony Leonard, 1440 Westwood Drive. I was here earlier for the info meeting that we had. A couple of things, I would just like to state that, and now looking and analyzing all the information, there is no option three. I would say that if I had an opinion, I believe option three at this point, from a fiscal standpoint, from a convenience standpoint, for all the people that live in this area, because it's a pretty big undertaking, I would prefer option three, which would be a reclamation, and then a repair of only areas that have, have had the damage or had the leaks in the past. And if that isn't on the table anymore, which it sounds like it is not, then I vote, my personal opinion is, to not do it at this point, and to put it off until we need to do it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I'm going to go to the second row then. Anybody else wishing to make a comment?
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Alan Hill, this is my wife Cheryl. We're at 1220 Morning View Drive, so obviously the project affects us directly. And we're generally supportive of the project to do it in whole. To me, it makes sense, rather than doing this piecemeal, and knowing the age of the sanitary system, and the water mains are such that there's bound to be more issues with those down the road. And I think it makes sense to do the project now. Obviously, the road surface is in bad condition. We've had a lot of drainage issues in our immediate area on our lot, and some of the neighbors' lots, so I think helping address that issue from a holistic standpoint makes sense. The only questions I really have is obviously paying the cost down at this point, so that they're more definitive. And then I, my understanding is the city's going to use some general funds, as well as bond for the balance of the project. And the estimated amount per household is about $10,000 assessment over a 20-year period, as I understand. So, subject to the interest rate, which unfortunately is getting away from us at this point, you know, 2029, so it would be great if we could have done this two years ago, but it is what it is. And I don't think the project should be scuttled on that basis long. So that's my opinion. I believe Cheryl shares that opinion, I'll let her add if there's anything else.
That's why we're still married. I have lobbied the city for some years now for stormwater management, because our family has spent tens of thousands of dollars to protect the foundation of our home. Our neighbors has spent tens of thousands of dollars for the protection of their homes. When I look at the assessment that would happen to our homes, whether it is a complete reconstruction, or as my person in the first row stated, a reclamation, it's the same. So it doesn't matter whether we do a partial reclamation or whether we do the whole thing, but I'd rather have my yard and my street torn up one time for, to serve my community for the next, I believe it's about 50 years, right? We just had Gary Peters come to our home and look at a problem we're having with our sewer, because it is tired, and it is not doing its job, and we're going to have to invest another couple of $10,000 to fix our sewer. I imagine that the sewer in our street probably is along that line, because our house was built in 1960. Delaying this project for my family and for the community that we've invested in means higher cost to everybody sitting in this room. So I am firmly and adamantly in favor of the hard work that you've put forth, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody behind next row that wishes to speak?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Ron Rensel, and I live at 1230 Morning View Drive. And I just want to go on record, similar to what I said earlier, with regards to the storm sewer, making sure that we're addressing the storm sewer in full, and to say that in order to do the storm sewer in full, you heard from the engineers that we need to do a full reconstruction, knowing also that the assessment, as was being described, is going to be the same, whether it's partial or whether it's full, it's going to be the same investment that these all neighbors are going to have. I would rather get more value for our assessment than we do partial storm sewer. Okay? I'm owner of a consulting firm that does a lot of this same type of work, and to have an assessment that you are proposing to us is a phenomenal opportunity for myself, as well as the rest of the neighbors, half of what most assessments are that we're looking at in my company. So thank you very much for that. No, you're not.
Thank you. Anybody else over here? All right, I'll move over here, second row, third row, next to Jake, Mr. Notch.
Hello, top notch, leave at 1250 Morning View Drive. And basically, I just wanted to say that you, Mayor and council, are the only ones standing between unnecessarily replacing 100% of our water mains, when only 86.5% of the lineal footage of our water main has had zero problems in the last 49 years. Yet WSB wants you to replace all of it. The devil is always in the details, and here are the details for you. On Eastview Avenue, it had zero water main issues on 2,000 lineal feet of piping in 49 years. Morning View Drive, zero water main issues on that in 1,900 feet of piping in 49 years. Morning View Court, zero water main issues on 225 lineal feet of piping in 49 years. Westwood Drive, zero water main issues on 1,070 lineal feet in 49 years, outside of an automobile damage to a hydrant water main at Bill Gillespie's property there in 2009. Westwood Avenue, zero water main issues on 750 lineal feet in 49 years, outside of a problem with a hydrant there at 5570 in 2015. All documented water main problems have been at Morning View Drive and Westwood Drive intersection, and a couple of valves which are relatively simple repairs and not water main breaks. And according to our calculations here, we've got 5,945 lineal feet of piping with zero problems in the 49 years. And if you divide that by the total lineal footage of the project that they're looking at here, which is 6,875, it's 86.5% of the water mains have had zero problems. And if we vote for this, in my opinion, it's a $5.2 million proposal, knowing that you know that you were voting to waste about $3.6 million, and also know that you'd be voting to destroy 50 mature trees in our neighborhood, which is going to change the look of our whole neighborhood there, that are irreplaceable in the tree canopy for decades, to say nothing of the temporary water mains, temporary natural gas lines that are going to have to be up here, relocating nails, box service there, inability to traverse our driveways for weeks, and disruption to lawns, irrigation systems of every single parcel. Plus, WSB has already extended the construction time to go all the way out to November of next year. At a minimum, in their current proposal, WSB is simply biting off too large a project for long construction season. I strongly recommend and encourage you to vote against this $5.2 million total reconstruction, and insist that consultants come back with a proposal that only replaces the 830 lineal feet of potentially bad water mains. Reclaim the roadway to top eight inches, and perform necessary surface water improvements costing roughly $1.6 million total. This would also significantly minimize construction disruption for our neighborhood. And the money that you'd save here, you could be putting to other projects that are, need of resurfacing, milling overly.
Thank you, Ms.
Our, our, I'm sorry, I'm up to the time limit. I've already been with some, I'm sorry, Lisa. But it's just.
I thought you were finished, sorry.
Because I think it's warrant, be looking, see my emails, and I've sent them to WSB already, which I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have other people behind. Anybody else wish to comment or have questions regarding the proposal? Hearing none then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask at Aaron, can you come to a microphone? Maybe there is best? Because I know we had some questions at our open house previously, and they were asking about pipes, and what is, now remind me about the questions. So one of them was how long a lifespan does a PVC pipe have? There's different PVC piping, I understand. And also, what is your recommendation? And kind of give us a report, if you will.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So last time I was here with the city, we talked about, the city offered a memo that looked at the age of the infrastructure, the reliability of the water main in this neighborhood, and based on current industry standards for failure curves of pipeline at this age, we felt like the pipes in this neighborhood were kind of at the end of the very, the reliable life, where they might still be able to provide some service to the community. We would see an increase in amount of failures into the future as that pipe begins to fail. We talked a lot about how this pipe is a 100-year pipe. That's not really true, because that would mean that all of this piping would last 100 years, and that's just not the truth. We'll begin to see failures in pipe of this age at an increased significance that ultimately would damage the asphalt above it. So it was our recommendation that the pipe be replaced as well.
And so what is the difference between ductile iron and the PVC?
So ductile iron or cast iron, cast iron was an older product. Ductile iron was a newer product that started to come into the industry in the 60s. It's a better product than cast iron, but it's not perfect. It does have, it does fail due to corrosive soils and other external kind of exposure type things. PVC is a, an improvement for water main, should have a substantially longer lifespan. Kind of ductile or cast iron.
What's, what's the average lifespan, do we know, for PVC?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay.
It would be longer than ductile.
Okay. And then, so why, let me ask you something. Why, why are you recommending replacing all of the pipe?
Given the fact that most of this pipe is installed in the same timeframe, and it's installed in the same manner, given, so like the corrosive soils in the neighborhood, installation methods, based on our kind of analysis, we would assume that it's going to have similar issues to the pipe that we're seeing, some of the failures in already. So we're, from an efficiency standpoint, it just makes more sense to replace that piping now than wait for it to fail and then tear up a brand-new road in the future.
Okay. And so when you say installation methods, what, how, I mean, do we know how it was installed?
So when I say installation methods, I would talk more about corrosion protection, so polygraphy pipe, modern corrosion protection that we would do now. We could have cord blue gold, we have polygraph on things. We would bend, commit piping differently. A lot of that wasn't done in the 60s, when a lot of this piping was installed. So we're assuming that this, the piping that maybe isn't showing some breaks right now was installed in the same manner as some other piping that is showing breaks.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Aaron? Did we get the questions?
I think the other question that we were asking is how long C900 PVC pipe has been used as, as water main? I think we were thinking 30 years. I think Mr. Notch indicated 40 or 50.
Yep. So C900 has been in the industry for quite a while. It's been tested over and over again, it doesn't show to be harmful to people. I know that's one of the items that was brought up, is there a public health concern? And there's no indication that C900 would be any kind of public health issues. And it's a very reliable product that's been tested for the last 30 or 40 years.
Okay, so, and that's the product that you're recommending for this project?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Is it stronger than standard PVC then?
It has similar strengths that would be required for me to allow. So basically, the pressure range is what you've got right now.
Okay, thank you. Counselors?
On the projects you've put the PVC piping on, specifically road water main ones, in the last 15, 20 years, have you had any large breaks, issues that you can think of?
Some, PVC does break, like all pipe. Usually, on new installations, it would be minor or minimal breaks, and that would be primarily because of an installation issue. But the product in itself is a very good product. It shouldn't have any kind of substantially different failures in the early life.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here too.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the public hearing, and I think the council's questions at this point. What we'll do is, we will get back to this, but first, we're going to do, under business items, we're going to first do the McIntune site plan and development agreement, and then the Duran Company site plan.
We have the second public hearing.
I'm sorry. All right, never mind. We're good, I closed that public hearing, but now I'm going to open the other public hearing. Too many public hearings here. And I know we have just a couple of people here for the North Arm one. Anybody have comments or questions regarding the North Arm project? Or Trails End, North Arm, that area?
Are there any updates?
Come, come to the, Stefan, if you could, please, just state your name and Borough Oaks Golf Club.
And fellow members, I'm Stefan Hamilton, I've worked at Borough Oaks for eight years now. And redoing North Arm Drive has been way overdue. So we just wanted to know if there are any updates on the project and what's happening.
Madam Mayor, thank you, sir, for the question. So I think the update specifically as it relates to Borough Oaks, at the time of the first neighborhood meeting, we only had an assessment range for the single-family residents. And at this time, we were looking at the preliminary assessment amount for the golf course to be $45,000. So that's, that's the only thing that's changed in the meantime. Otherwise, everything else is status quo, as we haven't proceeded with any other design elements.
And Stefan, that's for all of the parcels?
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then the other gentleman?
Hello, I'm Jason Tysel, 5475 North Arm Drive. We're across from the Borough Oaks community. I'm kind of surprised that the Borough Oaks people don't want some sort of improvements for the width, because they use their tractors and golf carts to go back and forth on a daily basis. My personal opinion on the road itself is, yeah, it's bad, but I kind of like the fact that we don't have a bunch of excess traffic on it. And, and I know that's going to change, there's just no two ways about it. So my suggestion, if, if I could throw it out there, would be to P-Rock it over and keep that traffic down. And I'm kind of surprised to hear the, the number of 45,000 for the golf course, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Completely?
Yes.
For the whole deal?
Right.
Okay, that's not even close to what it should be. I mean, the traffic that they have in comparison to any one of us is tenfold.
Sure.
So I think that number should definitely be changed. And I think for the safety of the golf course people, that they should want it wider in that portion, because there's, you know, not a whole, I'm surprised there hasn't been an accident there.
Right.
So I guess that's what I have for you guys.
So what we did, just so you know, we hired a firm to conduct a study to tell us exactly what would be fair and equitable, and we can't charge more than what's, what the benefit to the property is. And so that's the number that the firm came up with. And so I think we were going to be stuck with that number for the golf course.
Sure, well, but they definitely benefit exponentially more having their people come in with a nice smooth road, where for us that actually live on the road and not back off of it, like Trails End and such, we have to deal with that traffic.
Sure, I totally understand.
So it's not really, you know, and plus and minuses, it's not that much of a plus at all, in my eyes.
Yeah, no, I totally understand what you're saying. Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Anybody else for North Arm, Trails End? All right, so now I will close the public hearing for that. Any other questions, council of staff regarding that project? All right, so now, now we'll go on to, we'll first do the McIntune site plan and development agreement.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm kind of just going to talk about all of them, because they kind of go, go together. And what I'll do is give you a brief history on the site and how we got to where we're at tonight. We do have members of the development team in the crowd. I'll let them give, give them the opportunity to talk about some of the changes. Um, I'll let them give, give them the opportunity to talk about some of the changes that you probably noticed since the last time you saw the site plan at your concept review. Um, some changes that seemed to make a lot of sense, uh, for the overall site. So with that, I'll, like I said, I'll go through some summary here, information, um, of the development, how we got here. Uh, the five hundred acre site has been guided for development in the city's comprehensive plan since nineteen eighty-two, actually. That's as, as far back as, as it goes. Um, there have been a few attempts to develop the site that have failed for various reasons over the years. I'll just name a few of the, the big ones that some of the his, some people who have history right, might remember. Falling Waters was in nineteen ninety-four. There was an estate of, uh, development proposal in nineteen ninety-eight. And then Park Place was one of the more recent ones in two thousand and seven. Uh, the Woodland Cove development, as we see it today, that proposal started in two thousand and nine. Uh, there was extensive public meetings of various types regarding the site over the course of two years. And that's what led to the approval of the preliminary plat of the site in two thousand and eleven. Um, but it was always anticipated there was going to be a, a section of the site set aside for commercial multi-family development. Um, no one ever knew exactly what that would look like. Um, but the framework for that was, was put in place back in two thousand and eleven. And, uh, as you can see from your staff reports and the various approvals you've already given, uh, to Woodland Cove, uh, they're following those core values that were outlined in that master development agreement, uh, back in two thousand and eleven. So fast forward to the current site plan. Um, this came to fruition in June of this year. The planning commission reviewed, uh, a concept sketch plan of the proposal that you're seeing tonight. Uh, the city council saw the concept plan in, in July of this year. Um, one other, uh, meeting of note, there was a neighborhood meeting that was held at city hall uh, with Woodland Cove residents. This was one of, uh, many topics, uh, that was discussed. But, uh, just to give some background on the, the various meetings that have been held, uh, for this, uh, site plan review. To help keep the process moving, staff work with the applicants. And what we ended up doing was separating the final plat and the site plan review. As the council may recall, you approved the Woodland Cove ninth, ninth edition final plat at your September sixth city council meeting. You also entered into a preliminary, uh, development agreement, which would, would allow them to start grading if they so choose to, uh, do so. The planning commission reviewed the proposed site plan at their meeting on September twenty-sixth and they are recommending approval of the site plan as presented. Um, we do, as I said, uh, have several items for your review tonight on the agenda. There is, we did separate out the two site plans. So there, there's one there for the, the grocery store. And then we have a separate resolution, uh, for the multi-family, uh, building. And then there are two other resolutions, one to enter into a subdivision agreement with McIntunes. And then we, similarly to what we did at September sixth for McIntunes, we're, we are now doing for Doran. There is a res, a resolution to consent to the partial assignment of the, the master development agreement now that we've moved along in the process. So those are the, um, items for your consideration this evening. Like I said, if you want to give the applicant the oppo- opportunity to talk about, uh, a, a minor change, since you've seen it at the concept plan, certainly, uh, feel free to do so. Otherwise, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, David. Yeah, let's, let's have the applicant, I know that there was significant, um, questions regarding, uh, traffic. I know you did a traffic study. Uh, maybe we could hear some things and then the minor changes that have been made since our last visit. Could we? Who wants to do that?
Eric, can I give a civil site plan? Sure, yeah, watch me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Eric Miller. I'm with Saba Tech for the Civil Engineering Consultant for, uh, both projects. Our office is located at one two eight zero zero White Oak Drive, Suite three hundred in accounting Minnesota. Uh, so since we're last in front of you, yeah, we've completed a few things. Uh, one, uh, city council requested that a traffic assessment be completed, uh, which we have done and forwarded to the city and their staff consultants to consult for review. Uh, I think the basis of the, the study, the conclusion of the study was that the intersection, the as proposed, the access points as proposed operate in an acceptable level of service. Uh, in the both the AM and PM peak period. Uh, one item, uh, that came with the study was a confused analysis of the Highway seven roundabout with King's Point Road. And as you recall, uh, recently through an interagency discussion, uh, the capacity of that roundabout was reduced to improve the safety of the roundabout. And with that, um, with or without this development that has impacted some of the level of services at that, at that roundabout today, tomorrow, and into the near future, once this development is in place. Uh, the recommendation of our traffic consultant to complete the study was, um, understanding that when you reduce the capacity as originally designed to improve safety, likely at times, uh, the level of service is gonna be, uh, impacted. But it's still operating at an acceptable level of service for, for the classification of that mode. So they recommend just monitoring it, working with the various agencies that are involved. And if need be, uh, in the future, that, uh, what could always be expect, expanded from the one-way condition or single lane condition back to a no-way condition and improve the capacity.
And not necessarily safety.
Well, probably I think I'm talking safety. So it's obviously weighing the pros and cons of that component. Uh, any questions on the traffic analysis? Otherwise, I'll move on and guide you through some site plan adjustments that we made.
Please, thank you.
With the, uh, site plan, as you recall in the last meeting, uh, the apartment project had, uh, a garage entry to the lower level, which we refer to as P two on the south side of the building, and a secondary garage entrance at the north side of the building to access the P one level. Uh, this also then had this predominant drive coming down here accessing the garage. I believe Madam Mayor, you made the comment, you know, how do people know they're not gonna end up in some dead ends?
Correct, yeah.
Um, in our, uh, design coordination meeting with Doran Project, we challenged ourselves, I really was that the right thing to do with this entry point to the lower level garage having a perspective from this area come up with multi-tiered containing walls of significant height, significant cost to, so we provide for accessing that lowest level of the garage. And through some, uh, collaboration with the design team, we determined that this could be a better opportunity for the project as a whole. Taking this entry, making this broad sweeping curve, connecting kind of a horseshoe back around, uh, we believe is a more functional and effective design. Uh, it eliminates this right turn, left turn component into the parking field. It provides multiple points of access to the primary parking field for the, uh, grocery store. And it really provides a nice crosswind entry to visitors and guests to the, to the, uh, multi-family apartment project, uh, easily, uh, more easily, uh...
Accessible.
Furthermore, it doesn't do anything to the access points. Um, and it still maintains, you know, the primary flow and stack stacking out of the southern access point. Uh, with respect to the internal component, given this with the multi-family project, um, they're proposing to ramp from P one down to P two in general in the building.
Mm-hmm.
And furthermore, um, people are content that one access point to that garage, both number of units is, can function without any issue. Furthermore, it takes the resident traffic and will likely, based on just evidence of the residents, segregate that somewhat from the primary, uh, traffic for the grocery store. So for all of those reasons, we really believe that's an improvement to the product as a whole. And, uh, design is a bit of a iterative process, so we're, we're, we're happy that we got there and presented that point to you.
That, that's excellent. I, I, I like that. That's very good change. Thank you. I think it'll, um, help in, in many ways, so, great. Yep.
Any other questions?
Um, the crosswalks, you've added crosswalks?
Uh, yeah, so we've got, um, in this revised plan, you know, uh, fairly, uh, robust pedestrian connection out here. We've added crosswalks at this location. We've added crosswalks here. No issue with addressing the city comment to add a crosswalk at that location. Um, so, yeah, crosswalks and connectivity through development, um, we're working to have that pedestrian scale be able to flow, um, throughout.
Okay, and then sidewalks?
Uh, currently, our sidewalk connections are across the front of the building here. Uh, we've got a tight sidewalk connection along King's Point Road to, um, Highway seven. And then a connection back up to here, I know, the city. Uh, as of earlier today, has requested a, an additional sidewalk connection that we have not reviewed or discussed up here, down here, and over to this location.
That, that would be good. I think that'll help people get over to your, um, McIntunes. Yeah, I thi- I think that would help, be helpful. So, okay.
But we'll have to, uh, that would move basically to us as a pregame base.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people are gonna come out, both Woodland Cove and, um, what is the other one up there? And, and then it would be nice to have that crosswalk and then the, the sidewalks going down right, um, directing them into your facility. That would be great.
Buildings are clean.
Yeah.
You that commented on that request.
Thank, thank you. And then I, I noticed too on your plans, you had a lot of, um, vegetation planned. And I think that was one of the things that the, um, community, the neighborhood wanted some, some screening, if you will.
Yeah, certainly robust screening plan, permitting through this area of the development.
Yep, that's great, great. Comments? So I think, um, it, it's excellent. I mean, I, I'm really pleased to see that you've added, um, that you've addressed the traffic issue. Uh, you're gonna have turn lanes, I believe, left and right into the main one, right? Correct?
Uh, currently, there's a proposed left turn lane. I don't believe there's any need for a right turn lane at that.
Oh, okay, I thought there was one, okay. Um, and then in the future, um, I'm thinking that first turn in is, we'll monitor it and see how that goes. But, uh, did you give any thought to, should that be a right out only or should it be both? I mean...
Uh, we have, uh, met with transportation collaborative here. We, we, from our approach as being a site designer, that's with traffic, we do a lot of site design. And we prefer flexibility.
Yeah.
More flexibility we can pl- build into a, a site with people being able to choose how they wanna navigate and not driving or limiting access points. Unless there's a strong traffic reason to do it, we believe it's beneficial.
Okay.
So at this time, um, we're not proposing to limit that to a right out only. Um, and I don't believe there's any traffic perspective to, for us to consider that at this time.
Okay.
Those intersections operate at a level of service.
Most people will probably be going right anyway. I mean...
I would presume so.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Council questions? Comments? I think that, um, you did an excellent job addressing, um, the concerns of, of the neighborhood and, um, our concerns, so that's great. Thank you very much. Um, staff?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I, I think staff concurs with, with all those comments. And as I mentioned earlier, there are four resolutions here for your consideration. Uh, as I said, they, the site plans basically go hand in hand together unless there's a reason you'd wanna talk about the, the multi-family anymore. We certainly can do so, but otherwise, be looking for motions, uh, for approval of resolutions in your packet.
Are there any comments regarding the multi-family? Do we need to? I'm sorry, what?
What about what we just listened to?
There's a resident here that I think would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't wanna hold a hearing for what we just discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I tell you what, there, this isn't a public hearing. But if you have a question or comment regarding this issue, you can come forward and, and state that. Okay? I'm, thank you.
So, uh, my name is Aaron Geddicki. I'm at four six zero zero Fox Globe Drive in Attrista. Mayor and council, thank you for taking this unorthodox comment, please.
No, it's fine. It's not unorthodox.
I would just like to, one question, what acceptable traffic is? Because having lived there and watching this intersection, it already scares me trying to leave my house, even in off-hours. So like where, the question you had about the right only exit, I would urge you to consider that because if you're taking a left to go south from Woodland Cove Boulevard to King's Point, if you can bring the map back up, it might...
Yeah, I, I understand. You're on Woodland Cove Boulevard turning onto.
Yes, if you're going out that way and heading southwest, if someone's taking a left at, out of the development, how are you gonna see them? If the, if there's trees and foliage and everything like that? We're, we already have difficulty seeing traffic from the roundabout leaving the development. So, and those were concerns I brought up multiple times at other meetings. So they're just like, to see more, take them into consideration of that.
They issue more of the intersection and not necessarily the site itself?
Yeah.
So that you're talking about...
But the traffic increase of the development is going to affect those roads. That's my big concern.
Okay. So, let me, let me just rephrase this. So your concern is the trees and vegetation that are in the median, in the center, right?
My concern is the increase of traffic overall in the roads not being...
Okay. And the amount of traffic, okay. All right.
And sightlines and the amount of traffic are my biggest concerns with. And it seems like with a dedicated left turn is a good stepping point, but I think through traffic and the right turn, you know, it could be widened out to be more accessible for the residents in the area than may be directly affected by the increase of traffic.
Okay, right turn into Woodland Cove?
Yeah, into the residential areas.
Okay. Um, all right, let's address a couple of things.
Yep.
So, um, I was just talking with our staff and they were saying eventually we have to re, repave, um, King's Point Road. Okay, and when we repave King's Point, then that would be an optimal time to put in that, a right-hand turn lane onto Woodland Cove Boulevard, and that's what you're talking about.
Yep.
Um, I also have talked to staff after our neighborhood meeting and talked to them about the sightline because I think you were the one that mentioned it's hard to see. And so we can be looking at a few minor adjustments there to make that sightline a little bit better when you're making a, a left-hand turn out of Woodland Cove. What the applicant had in what their charge was to determine, um, traffic flow for the, for the McIntunes, specifically for the, um, right ha- left-hand turn lanes and if they were long enough and so on. And that's what they've done. I, I also was concerned about the vegetation in the medians because some of it's pretty big and, and somewhat causes some interference for sightlines. And we can address that, that's quite easily done. So we can, um, look at that. The, the other thing that we're gonna do, and I've talked to staff, is we can monitor the, the conditions, if you will, um, specifically that first right in, uh, left in. That's why I asked about the right out. Right now, we don't know what it's gonna do. So we'll monitor it and keep an eye on it and see how it goes. And if we have to make some changes, we can do that.
And then I guess the only other question is define acceptable levels of traffic, because that's not really a term.
Whatever they say it is. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. My name's Matt Pacino with TC Two. Uh, so we were commissioned to conduct the traffic study. Um, traffic studies are, uh, basically looking at existing conditions, adding on how, uh, the development's gonna impact the roadway. And so, uh, from a level of service perspective is how we as traffic engineers treat, uh, and compare intersection operations across not just this location, but across every intersection that we look at. So there's industry standards, uh, it's called level of service, so you get a grade. Um, A through D is generally considered acceptable. E's and F's are, are where you start to see that breakdown in congestion. Uh, and so our, our tools and our evaluations, right, I looked at this. And so, uh, from an overall intersection perspective, uh, all these access points are gonna operate pretty much at a level of service A. Um, some of those cross streets are gonna operate a little bit worse, probably not level of service B or C category, but, but well within industry standards for acceptable. Uh, and then just the other comment that I wanted to mention briefly about that right turn lane. Um, right turn lanes are typically more safety related than capacity related.
Right.
Um, but then it also comes with a trade-off of longer pedestrian crossing. So, um, and it can also increase speeds. So there's a balance between that as well. And so that's where, um, just something to be mindful of when you think about those right turns.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing that now, but we'll keep an eye on it and see what, what changes we may have to make in the future. Thank you. All right. Um, just, okay, so there's no number, in other words, that quantifies how much traffic? I mean, I mean, so like, you know, how many ADTs day, uh, you know, daily? I mean, what, what, what's the number, nothing?
There's, there's numbers, right?
Okay.
If you ever, if you read through the traffic study, it'll detail that. Um, you know, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for as far as the developments, you know, how much the development generates relative to what's out there. Um, I can speak to you under a full build-out scenario with all of Woodland... I can speak to under a full build-out scenario with all of Woodland Cove developed, with the proposed Mackintosh development fully developed. You know, I think Kings Point Road north of development is going to have about 2,500 cars a day. That's similar to what Woodland Cove would have on it. When you get closer to the southern part of what the roundabout is, you'll have about 7,000 cars a day. That said, that's a two-lane roadway that can easily handle 10,000 cars a day. With turn lanes, you can actually handle even more than that. So there's plenty of capacity and I think if you go back to the AWR and how the roundabout was originally designed, it was designed to accommodate full build-out of the development. And so what we've actually found is the development is actually generating less traffic than what the original projections are. And so hence, we continue to monitor it, right? It's operating safer today than what it was as a restripes roundabout. So monitor it, you can always restrike it back. And we've had conversations with Mandata on that, and that's ultimately their decision. But I think that's the big construction.
I think we're more in tune for safety versus capacity. I'd rather have it be safer than be able to handle more traffic as long as it's safe.
And it's really a peak hour congestion, really the PM peak hour. So it operates really well for 23 and a half hours of the day. It's that one hour of the day where you see that congestion.
Right, all right, thank you. All right. With that then, I have four motions, we'll do them one at a time. Is there a motion then to approve the site plan for Mackintosh and Woodland Cove?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin made the motion and Ms. McGregor seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. So next, our resolution is to authorize the execution of a subdivision agreement between J&amp;J Minatrista LLC and the city.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. And next, we have a resolution to approve the site plan for the Duran Companies for a 148-unit multifamily building in Woodland Cove.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. Next, we move on to a consent to the partial assignment of the master development agreement regarding block two, block one, Woodland Cove ninth edition.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. You're good to go. Looking forward to the new grocery store, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our street utility reconstruction project number 1-23. And then we'll also have our, the other one for project, for the north arm one. I'm gonna, before we get going on this, we have a council member absent this evening, as you can tell. He had a family emergency. His wife is actually in the emergency room right now. And I really think this is a very, very important decision that needs to be made. I would like to have a full council so that the decision is a full council decision. And I'd like to ask that we move the the resolutions to our next meeting, which would be October 19. We've heard all the comments. I'm going to ask our absent council member to review those on on YouTube and to talk with staff about them. And should he have any questions, he can ask staff as well. And then we'll bring this back to our council meeting on October 17. Is that in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so what we can do, Adam, is you can do your presentation if you want to. Or you want to hold it for next time?
Both resolutions, the professional services agreement and order of the council in the next meeting?
I think so.
Might just say that we're.
Okay. Thank you, that's always helpful. All right. And then the street reconstruction project, this one is a little more, how do you say, easy? The one on the north arm, do we want to do that or hold off? The reclamation project?
Well, if we're going to hold off on the longer project, hold off on the longer.
All right, so we'll, okay, we'll hold off, yes.
I would recommend you get a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Thank you, all right. So do I have a motion then to postpone the approval of professional services agreement for the final design and bidding services for the city project number 01-23? And also to postpone the order of improvements and authorize a preparation of plans and specifications for that?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. And then do I have a motion to postpone the approval of professional services agreement for the final design and building services? And also the improvements and authorized preparations of plans and specifications for the north arm project? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll bring this back on October 17. So thank you very much for anybody that's here regarding that. So now that concludes all of our business items. We will move on to staff reports. David?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. As was brought up at the beginning of the meeting tonight, and as you may recall, we were we were set to give an update on 6605 Wood Edge Road, the Wood Edge conditional use permit. Council gave direction a few months ago and wanted an update at this first meeting in October to see what the status was. And as you can see, it's a it's a staff update, not a business item, so that's good news, obviously. So the the update is the existing building has been removed and the site has been graded, so it's ready for construction. We got an update from the representative from Mortensen Building. And they did run into, unfortunately, they've run into some supply chain shortage issues. It has been somewhat of a challenge, but not a huge delay. They expect the entire building and the material package to be delivered by the end of this week. And so he has the construction crew to follow shortly thereafter. As soon as he has noticed, that he knows that the materials are there, he'll have a crew on site. So I suspect work would be starting, if not at the end of this week, it'd be next week likely. Building permit was picked up weeks ago, picked up and paid for. And that is the work that's been done to date. So obviously, continue to monitor it and inspections will come as as the progress goes on with our building inspectors and such.
Excellent, excellent. Good job and looking forward to having the new building up and also make sure that everything is compliant. So thank you very much. All right, staff, any questions on that? All right, then we'll move on to Ally.
Yeah, so we had the candidate forum last Thursday, which was recorded and is now posted on the website and the League of Women's Voters website, so if anyone would like to view that after the fact. We are still open for absentee voting during our business hours and will continue until the general motion.
It's not absentee voting though, it's early voting, isn't it?
Early, in-person absentee voting.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, all right. All right, thank you. Do we have a planning commission meeting?
We will be having a planning commission meeting, yes.
In October?
Yep.
I have to look at my calendar. Okay, we'll get back to you on the 17th. All right. Council reports, we'll start with.
Can I just give a quick, assuming everyone's probably seen or will be seeing that the third quarter utility bills are out in the mail. They're obviously the ones with the highest usage usually on average for the year. So you're getting a little bit of feedback at the staff level from, obviously, the conservation adjustments we made early in the year. But it is what it is, I think.
Okay.
I haven't got mine yet.
I don't have water, but I just got my city utility bill today, actually, so, yeah. All right, all right, thank you, Brian. Let's see, so we'll start with, anything Kathleen, anything?
No.
Nothing, Pam?
I attended a personal committee meeting on the 29th to discuss the personal policy updates. And also I attended the League of Women Voter Candidate Forum, and it was very good, well-run.
Okay, let's see. I attended the personnel committee meeting, several of them, and then the candidate forum too, very good, great candidates. And then the regional council mayor's meeting is, will not be happening in October, so that'll be November. And I'm not sure, I have to look at Northwest League, so that's about it. I don't have anything else.
We do have open seats on the Planning and Parks Commission as well.
Oh, that's a.
If anyone knows someone who would like to get involved, please have them visit our website.
That was posted on the website, right?
Yep.
Facebook, it'll be in the newsletter, yep. So I did see it, I printed it because I do know something that's interesting. It says that you're accepting applications for volunteer positions for the Planning and Parks Commission. It closes on November 23rd. Yes, so.
All right, good, thank you. All right, then with that, we can be adjourned if there's a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen seconded that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 4-0, thank you.